The regular meeting of the Cumberland School Committee on Thursday, April 20th, 2023 at 7:09 PM. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, sorry. For the record, Mr. Fiorello and Mrs. Feather are not able to be here tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. I need a motion to approve. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Mrs. Rogalsky. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Item A, approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 4/6/2023. Item B, approval of minutes from the executive session, 4/6/2023, and a motion to approve the consent agenda. Motion by Mr. Collins. Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the personnel announcements, and I will kick this off by introducing and making our first appointment of the evening of Bonnie Drezick as our new Human Resources Manager effective April 10th, 2023. So, welcome and congratulations again, Bonnie.
Thank you very much.
We are happy to have you. And then I will hand it over to Bonnie for the rest of the appointments.
Thank you. We have three additional personnel actions tonight. First, we have an appointment effective 6/20/23, Stephen Mulcahy for the controller position in the business office. We have a retirement after 28 years of service, effective 6/30/2023. That's Elaine Mantega, a special educator at North Cumberland Middle School. And we have a resignation effective 4/14/2023, Wesley Salvas, and he is a paraprofessional in the ALP program at Cumberland High School. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is report out of executive session meeting. Item A, report out of executive session meeting on 4/20/2023, report out of executive session votes. We did have a vote. We had a student discipline hearing, and the parents' recommendation or their appeal, thank you, their parents' appeal was sustained, and the suspension was reduced as requested by the parents. This was a three to two vote with the chair and Mrs. Vogel voting nay. But the suspension has been reduced as part of that vote. The next item is to vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. I need a motion to seal the minutes. Motion by Mrs. Rogalsky. Second by Mr. Vogel. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report, the school construction update. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Just the one item, school construction. Mr. Chandler, if you could. Lots of progress in our different projects. Here we have Garvin. Garvin, since last time, we have the floor cement poured. We have the walls going up. And this is Tuesday's picture. Today's actually much further along, so it's very exciting to see that moving along on Garvin's new addition. Here we have, once again, another shot of Garvin on the backside. Once again, you can see it all moving along nicely. Thank you. Inside, all the ceilings are mostly gridded now, so that's a big chunk of the work done, so that's encouraging to see. The bathroom's not very exciting to you, but this is an old bathroom from decades and decades ago. A lot of work went into this to make it ready not to receive all the new pieces, all the new equipment, so it's all ready to go. It's nice. Keep going, Mike. Thank you. Just doing a lot of low voltage wiring in all the schools while the ceilings are open, all that's happening as we speak. This was a staircase in Garvin. No longer. Now it's a new entryway. It kind of joins the new building with the old building. That's all framed up and ready to go. And now we're into Ashton. That's a picture of fire suppression, so that's all happening going in all over the new addition at Ashton. Also, the HVAC is going in at the same time, so all that's occurring. Doors are going in as we continue inside with the sheet rock and the mudding. Next slide. Windows are going in at Ashton, so that's exciting to see. It's really, really moving along quickly. And once again, just all the sheet rock being taken care of. So a lot of people working at one time, whether they're wiring, they're spackling, their HVAC work, all happening at the same time. Once again, ceiling grids going in at this school. You can see above the ceiling how much goes into that above. You really can't see here. There's actually a gentleman. He was doing work on the HVAC way up there inside, so a lot of work happens below and above at the same time. Next slide. Once again, same thing. This, just in the hallway, a lot of work going on with just conduit work. These cages actually hold the conduit, those metal racks, all the wire goes into that. That's all moving along. Just another shot of Ashton with the sheet rock. Community, so now you can see the entryway starting to take shape. The roof is completed. Look to your right. Next slide, Mike. That's the roof. Next slide, please. The windows are in. Very exciting. That's a lot of work. All the windows are in. Looks fantastic. Next slide. And they were still putting in the last couple of windows when I was there on Tuesday. That is now completed as of today, Thursday, so once again, moving along. That's the stage at Community. Brand new stage. That's what it looks like when just the rough finish that's going in. And once again, window framing going in at Community. And let's not forget Cumberland Hill. We had some damage last year to the sidewalk. We had to wait till it was warm enough, and they repoured the sidewalk in those areas that were damaged in Cumberland Hill. And also, look at the benches, our new benches. We poured little slabs. Attention to detail, right? To want it to look nice. So now Cumberland Hill looks nice in the front. And I think that's at the end. In terms of, just I know Mr. Collins usually asks me, Garvin, timeframe is getting better and better. We are on track to open the main building on time, and the new addition, which was delayed, is getting very close now to being opened on time. So I wouldn't say today it's on time exactly, but it was weeks out, and now we're getting very close. So it's very exciting to see. We're closing the gap quickly. So, thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Thornton? Great. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is reports of standing committees. Item A, fiscal management subcommittee update. Mr. Collins.
Thank you. The fiscal management subcommittee met this evening. We have one resolution for the committee to consider, the full committee, and just the only other thing, out of Food Services, they're still operating on a surplus, but there are five vacancies in Food Services with eight weeks left, but they're, so if anybody knows, anybody's interested in looking for a part-time job working in the district, I don't actually know how many hours it is, but that's something that caught my attention. So there was no payment of the bills, one resolution, and Mr. Brignano gave us his office monthly report, so, thank you. It's a brief.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next is the Policy and Procedures Subcommittee Update. Did it meet this week, Ms. Smith?
We did not meet this week.
The next is the Achievement and Communication Subcommittee Update. We also did not meet this week, but we are looking at scheduling our first meeting in May, our next meeting in May. And the next is the District Health and Wellness Subcommittee Update. Mrs. Rogalsky?
Next week, but I did want to let everyone know that Sherri Heard, who is a member of our committee and wonderful PE teacher at Garvin, I don't know if you recall, we spoke about the picture menus. She went in and created a clickable picture menu for our youngest learners, our MLL learners, our special ed learners who maybe can't vocalize. So if you are looking at the menu page, there is a pictogram option, and you can click on that and see the individual photos for each day. So the idea is to get to photos eventually, but this is a nice stepping stone.
Thank you, everyone. The next item is comments from the public. Are there any comments from the public today? I do want to recognize President Kinch for being here with us. Thank you. The next item is new business. Item A, discussion and/or vote to approve school department's school construction MOA budget adjustments.
Madam Chair, tonight we have Megan Habrela with us from Colliers to take us through these first two items.
Good evening, everyone. Okay. Mike, do you mind just moving that up a little bit, please? So what we have before here, before us, is the memorandum of agreement that was approved back in 2020. So here we are. It's 2023. We are three years into the project. We've got Cumberland Hill behind us. We've completed this high school transitional space work. We are well underway at Garvin. The first part of Ashton and Community are underway, and we'll be looking at the BF Norton School, the two middle school locations. So where we are right now, as part of the yearly requirement by RIDE, every June 30th, we have to submit to them a whole package that's part of the housing aid reimbursement. So that's where we report on how we are progressing with the school district, and with that, it allows us to then file for the bonus points, which means the reduction in our bond, and so we look to claim that each year. So what we have here is when you look at the printout, you're going to see the column that's highlighted in green. It says the 2020 MOA. So these are the per-project costs that were approved for each location. The next column that I'd like for you to just look at right now is when you go to the one that's like that peachy salmon color, that's where we're looking to make the adjustments. So why are we making the adjustments? We're making these adjustments because we had some cost savings that we had upon completion of Cumberland Hill. We also had some additional work that was picked up at the high school, where we did some carryover of some of the pre-K CTE program work early around the project. So we had to offset, if you're looking at the green column, the high school swing space, you'll see 2.3 million. And when you look to the next column where it says spent to date, that's the actual number that we spent on the project. So you can see, we went a little bit over for that particular location, so what we have to do is create an adjustment, because when we present to RIDE, they're going to want to see the orange, excuse me, the green column and the orange column. We're not going to be submitting the in-between information. That's solely for Cumberland's internal use, so you can understand where the adjustments have been made. So if we stick with the high school swing space, you can see, going to the orange column, we're going to report to RIDE that we have claimed, or excuse me, we have spent to date $4 million, okay? So with that, we're looking at the other projects. We've completed Cumberland Hill, so we can see the original MOA was 12.6 million. What we have spent to date is 12.3 million. So right there, there's a surplus that we've created. So if you go to the next column over, you can see that that surplus, we're going to carry it over to another project. In this case, we felt it was best that we would transfer this money over to Garvin. If you move up to Garvin, you can see MOA amount from 2020 was 14.5 million. The costs for this project to date are coming in at about 15.6. We did add some additional scope to it. There's some additional material escalation. There's, you know, a spread right now. So again, if you follow the columns and just look at the notes, you can see how we're looking to offset some of the budgets. So to just reconfirm, we will present this MOA adjustment to RIDE, so they can see how we're moving money. If you'll notice at the very bottom, the totals, they're still staying at the exact same amount of the approved total budget of 79 million. So if we, actually, bear with me here, you'll notice with Ashton and Community, so you'll see, they've got a column on the far right side that says Phase Two Budgets. So this is where we are right now, based on the original MOA amount. Currently, we're tracking a 10.1 and a 9.7 respectively for the schools. So right now, that's just for the first phase, which is the exterior additions that we're building. We still have the interior renovations to complete. So where we are right now in the project is really trying to help boost those project budgets a little bit more, because the budgets that were presented back in 2020 didn't include some of the educational enhancements, some of the things that were incorporated into Cumberland Hill, the new ceilings, the new cabinets. So we're trying to keep the parity amongst the schools. So you'll see, when you read the transfer notes, we're trying to bolster those accounts a little, or projects, a little bit more. If you scroll down a little bit more. Okay. So what we also did was, there was some additional funding that was done outside of the bond. So there's work being done to replace the Garvin roof. That's $540,000. So that is, has already been applied to the Garvin budget. We have an FFNE Furniture Fixtures and Equipment Grant that is, oh, that was issued to Cumberland School Department. That is 100% reimbursable. So that amount has not been applied to any of the project budgets just yet, because that would increase our bond amount. So for the purposes of this, this part for where we need to seek your approval is, that's held outside of the bond, so we'll apply it to a project, but for recording these MOA adjustments, we're not going to reflect that. This is solely for your awareness. We also had some additional costs that were paid outside of the bond. The Cumberland School Department paid the FFNE for Cumberland Hill, and then there was a master lease that we did for the UNIVENS at the high school, which helped offset, or excuse me, Cumberland Hill, which offset some costs. And then, lastly, you're going to see, if you recall, the original bond was for the 83 million, and the RIDE did not approve the 3.9 million for the FFNE packages. So what our hope is and our goal is, is to be able to resubmit for this difference, the 3.9, as part of the Stage Two proposal. So I'm just reflecting that there for you to show that, you know, there's additional funding that we would like to be able to apply to our projects, or your projects, excuse me. That's a lot. Please ask questions.
And so what we would, what we are voting on tonight is that we are in agreement with these adjustments in the way that they're made, and the dollar amount remains the same, the aggregate dollar amount. Are there any questions or comments, Dr. Thornton?
Just to stress, we're trying to match the Cumberland Hill standard, right, in terms of like-new, right? Can you talk more about that?
The, in terms of the, like, some of the work that we've done?
Right.
Yes. So what we've been, the Cumberland Hill package was the ceiling tiles, new lighting in the majority of the school classrooms. We also did refurbishments to the classrooms. We, oh my gosh, why am I blanking? I'm trying to think.
Whiteboards?
Whiteboards, yes, the tack boards. I'm completely blanking.
Hallway work?
Yes, you're doing great. So we're trying to get that parity. There's a whole bunch of the casework, the cabinetry that were in all of the classrooms. Those have been replaced. So it's really just replacing a lot of the wear and tear fixtures that have been, you know, long used and loved. So FFNE is a very critical part to 21st century learning, so that's a big push right now. So just to emphasize, though, there's a lot of information here, and this is for your purposes, this is not shown to RIDE. We have a letter that we prepare to them explaining, you know, why we're looking to make this MOA adjustment. We have to get the approval now so that they can see these money shifts, so that when we go to submit to them for June 30th, they've already seen these adjustments. So we don't want to surprise them with, you know, these shifts in monies. So that's why we're presenting this to you now, now that we're very much into construction on a handful of your projects. So, and then just really quickly, if we touch upon the middle school locations, you'll see those projects have remained the same. So the scope of work that, you know, was originally shown in 2020, those remain still in place to be done. You'll also see that BF Norton is also, you know, tracking the 8.3 million.
Any other comments or questions? If not, then I need a motion.
I'll motion to approve and go forward with this movement to the state.
I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Smith, second by Mr. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes five to zero. Thank you for that. And you're staying up for item B.
Yes, please.
Comparison of school construction current bond and bond vote, potential bond vote for fiscal year 2023, 2024, for BF Norton Schools revised construction schedule.
So we were asked to present what it, why the importance is to try and move forward with a new BF Norton elementary school. So we wanted to present the financial importance behind this. So what we have to start at the very top, you'll see, these, the cost per square foot, the square footage numbers are all based upon RIDE numbers. So based on an enrollment number of 576 students, that equates to 149 square feet per student. So when you start to roll out the math, based on the RIDE calculations, when you include the cost for FFNE per students, as well as IT, to build a new elementary school, you're looking at a cost of $50 million. So what we've also, you know, learned from RIDE and know that this is what they would look to approve, is that with a new school, new build would be 50 million. Knowing that we already have 8.3 million already approved under the prior bond, we would be able to carry that over to the future bond. So when you look at the 50 million less the 8.3 million, that leaves you with a bond amount of 42 million. So this is where it becomes extremely critical to really focus on, is the next two sections are labeled 2023 Housing Aid Reimbursement, and then also 2024. So what's important to recognize is that this year is the expiration of all the bonus points. So that means Cumberland, right now, when we maximize the amount of bonus points, that puts us at a state participation rate of 63.8, or 63.8%. So that means the state's going to contribute $27 million. That means the Cumberland taxpayers are then responsible for 15 million. So fast forward to next year, if we choose to hold off on this bond, that puts us at a flip, not a deficit, excuse me, that puts the state participation back to our base rate. So our base rate is 43.8%. That means the state will pay 18 million, and that puts the Cumberland taxpayers responsible for 23 million.
Madam Chair, I would just add, in terms of, you know, the question would be, you know, do it in '23, do it in '24, or just don't do it at all, I would just go back to enrollment. We track it, as you know, a lot. Today, we are at 5,009 students, and you might ask, why is that important? I will tell you. NESDEC had us at 5,016 students in the school year 2930. We're coming up on the 2930 enrollment projection for NESDEC. It was done in January, so we're going up even faster, like a slope. If we do the construction, this new four-track school, we have approximately 244 seats available to us in today's numbers. That's some nice flexibility. If you don't do it, as you know, we're fine today, we're fine tomorrow, but I would forecast for you in the next five years, you'll have a overcrowding problem.
So for the 8.3 million that is currently in our bond, you know, that's already approved, that would get us some enhancements to BF Norton, but for 7 million more, essentially, that would get us a brand-new school.
Yes. That's a great way to put it.
Sure.
Yeah. Mr. Collins?
Megan, so what we would require is, this would require, in this year, 2023, that it's put to a ballot in the voters of Cumberland. So this isn't us agreeing to it. This would have to be, per our charter, it would have to go to the, it would have to go to the voters. So the voters would have to approve this year in order, or they could do it next year, but it would cost us almost $8.5 million more payback if we put it off until next year.
Yes, that is all correct.
Ms. Smith?
So Megan, we had discussed it when we did the first initial meeting and going through it, and I actually think that Council President Kinch has brought this up. Have we discussed with RIDE, because our numbers are exasperating much faster than I think anybody anticipated in the urgency to then look at a build instead, has anybody approached RIDE yet to ask for, I think, Mr. Kinch, you had said, some way that we could take that vote next year and not lose those points, and just to make sure that we're covering all bases? Because if we can get an extension for six months, I think the concern, or even till next year's vote, the concern has been turnout, what will occur, and are we going to get the true representation of our town? So I just want to bring that up again.
I have spoken to RIDE, and there is no inkling of any delay. The state is moving. The timeline is what the timeline is.
So there's a lot of moving pieces that go into making this happen. This is a great opportunity. We are still waiting for our Stage One approval. Upon approval of that, there's obviously further discussions that have to be made to then go to this next stage, Stage Two. Stage Two deadline is September 15th. So even before September 15th, there's a large amount of work that has to be done, not only from a due diligence part, but there's also from the community standpoint. You know, we also have to talk with bond counsel. We also have to, you know, get us on the ballot for the November election, so there's a lot to do. It's achievable, but it is something that we do have to work together and collaborate on. This is, I think the numbers speak volume. It's a great opportunity. I don't know what's going to happen next year. I mean, there's discussions always being had, trying to extend things, but in the moment, you know, it's pretty steadfast that after this year, these bonus points will go away. So under contract, we have to have a contractor in place by the end of 2023. Lots to do, short window.
Mr. Collins?
I do have a question, not for Megan, but maybe some people in the committee who are here, Dr. Thornton, or maybe even Megan. Obviously, elections are not held in the secret. So when we, what kind of advertising goes into, when we have, like, a special, we obviously have a congressional election in the fall, so people will be aware of that. But what kind of, do we have any obligation to advertise and let people know? I mean, I'm sure we would, encourage people to vote, but what is our obligation to advertise the election, to Mrs. Smith's point about voter turnout? I mean, we have regular elections, a 20% vote, you know what I mean? So how do we encourage more people to vote?
To me, our role is to inform the voters. I don't think we're going to be out there, like, you know, drumming up, driving folks to the polls, if you will, but certainly to inform people. But step one would be, if we get approval of Stage One, we get a letter of intent signed by myself, the mayor, school committee chair, and then we, you know, start working on Stage Two, and then really having a lot of informational sessions informing the public, why would we want to do a new BF? What's that all about? Really, kind of going around town, different locations, to kind of have informational sessions for people about why would we do this.
Ms. Smith?
And Dr. Thornton, you probably can answer this, or Mr. Kinch can answer this, too. What is the timeframe in which we must notify the state to be placed on the ballot? Is it a 90-day prior to?
I'm not exactly sure. My recollection is a letter of intent as part of the Stage Two submission. We would then have to have the town affirm the concept at the State House. Someone would sponsor us, so it would be springtime to get all that type of stuff done. So spring session of the Cumberland Town Hall and the State House with Cumberland sponsoring us to get on the agenda, the ballot for the fall.
Okay. So it is spring now. That's why I'm asking. So, I mean, and we have to wait for that approval to come in, and I just don't recall what the specifics are on the timeframe to make sure that we have it on the ballot, because we certainly, September 15th, I believe, and we all agreed, was past the date that we'd have to have notification.
I thought it was in June typically.
Okay. Right. And that's what I was trying to find out. So thank you. We should just. We should just probably make sure of that, because our timing is shrinking every day.
Okay, and I know you mentioned this, Megan. In a previous discussion, we were wondering whether the 8.3 million that was already in our bond could be applied to this. And it sounds like the answer is now, yes, it can be applied.
Correct. We have had multiple conversations reconfirming that as well with RIDE.
And I know in previous discussions, we were also talking about the ownership of the land and whether that would be an obstacle.
The mayor's making progress on that front? I think we should have something concrete probably in the next week or so.
So this is on our agenda tonight, just as a discussion in an awareness.
Yes.
I think, and if, as a school committee with Dr. Thornton, if this is something we want to move forward with, then we need to look at the timeline, as you said, and a lot of moving parts and things that need to get lined up pretty quickly. And I know the town council needs to be informed and, of course, in agreement with us moving forward with that too. So those are things that we're going to need to.
I forgot I had one more slide. It's just little. This just reflects the bonus points. So the first two in the blue color, health and safety, as well as educational enhancements. So that actually expired last year, but RIDE did agree to extend it to expire the end of 2023. So you can see the four in the green, those are what expire the end of 2023. When I say expire, it just means we have to have these projects that are slated to take advantage of these bonus points under contract with a contractor. So those are the bonus points, just kind of more awareness for you. It's, I understand it, but we don't talk about it all the time, so I just wanted to have that slide for you.
All right. Any other comments or questions? All right, thank you, Megan.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Discussion and/or Vote to Approve the Revised 2022, 2023 School Calendar with the last day of school now being June 23rd, 2023. Is that correct, Dr. Thornton?
That is correct. Due to the two weather event days, we are Friday, June 23.
Okay, so I need a motion on this? Motion by Mr. Collins to approve, second by Mrs. Rogalski. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero. June 23rd, last day of school. Next item on the agenda is Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Homeschool Instruction Requests for the 2022, 2023 School Year?
We have none.
We have none. Okay, next item on the agenda, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Resolution. I'll hand this over to you, Mr. Collins.
Right. We have SCPR-04-2023 Owner Representation Services, March 2023, to Colliers. So Megan, we can just give her a check on her way out. This passed Fiscal Management Subcommittee, three to zero, and I'd move passage to the full committee.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve Resolution SCPR-04-2023-40. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor? Aye, opposed? That passes five to zero. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Discussion and/or Vote to Approve Payment of Bills. Mr. Collins?
There are no bills tonight, next time, next time.
Next item on the agenda is School Committee Comments, School Liaison Reports. Any comments from the school committee? Mr. Collins?
I'm surprised this hasn't been brought up, because we're obviously with other things. But RIDEcast started this week, so I wish all the students well, the teachers well, and all the people who work very hard. I know I had, I mentioned this last night at the town council. Monday night, I had to run out and get Jolly Ranchers and gum in room I made, get it to plug in our Chromebook. So it's an exciting time, a lot of kids are anxious, but they've worked very hard. And, you know, it's time for them to show what they've accomplished this year. And I know Mr. Devan is here, and he worked, and Dr. Thornton worked extremely hard to prep us for this. And we look forward to building off the tremendous gains we've already made since COVID shutdown. So yeah, best of luck to everybody, you know, I think it was ELA this week, at least in the eighth grade level. And the math and science are upcoming. So best of luck to everybody, not just the students, but the teachers who have worked so hard. And I feel bad for them, the days, tomorrow's Friday, the day after RIDEcast. So things are going to be a little wild, so.
Any other comments from the school committee? Okay, the next item is Vote to Go into Executive Session.
All set, Madam Chair?
Don't have any of that. So the next item is adjourned, and a motion to adjourn by Mrs. Rogalski. Second by Mr. Vogel. All in favor? Aye, opposed? We are adjourned at 7:44 PM. Passes five to zero.